Okay, so we're relying on both. All right, so we'll get it get started. Notice here by given that Willacy County Commissioners Court will have a regular meeting at the County Justice Office Commissioners Courtroom at five seventy six West Main Street in Raymond, Texas, seven eight five eight zero on Thursday, August the twenty second of two thousand and twenty four at ten AM for the purpose of discussing the following items. During the course of the meeting, any discussion of any item on the agenda to be had an executive review session, Willacy County Commissioners Court will convene such executive review session in accordance with section five five one point oh, one of the Texas government code. Any final action, final decision, file will all be required in the opinion of Willacy County Commissioners Court with regards to any matter considering such close or executive meeting or session. The final decision or final ought to be either in the open meeting covered by the notice upon the reconvening of the public meeting or the subsequent meeting of the Willacy County Commissioners Court upon notice thereof as the county has determined. So with that, on this meeting's order, matter being different, could you establish a forum, please?
Yes, sir. Judge Pre seat one.
Present.
Judge Pre seat two.
Present.
Judge Pre seat three.
Present.
Judge Pre seat four.
Present.
I'm the county judge.
Present.
We do have one.
So with that, please put the information.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution for what you stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please remain standing. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to make the correct decisions for the great community of Willacy. Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you. Okay, so we go to line number four, public comments. Ready? Okay, now we move on. Line item five is approved of claims. As you know, she is working on the project, pay and I don't know. So we'll come back to it. Line item number, we'll come back to line item five. Line number six presentation, the Mid Rio Grande border area health education center on the internal waters, A H D C, as been conducted in Willacy County since two thousand and twenty two. Welcome.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
It's a pleasure to be here before you. First and foremost, thank you for allowing us to be on the agenda. Before I proceed, I just want to introduce some of our team members and one of our supporters here. To my right is Hazel Medeiros. She's higher academic and program services coordinator. Jack, please, I want to ask you as a health careers coordinator, financial projects coordinator, and of course, Judge, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, for those of you all who don't know me, my name is George Salis. I'm still around, still alive. Don't get it. And I thank you for what y'all are doing consistently. But as y'all don't know, we haven't stopped doing it. Every day, there's something going on in the regional home for the betterment of the community. We have not only the health education community that comes to us over and over and over again because of the need in the community, but also there's another coalition that we just started, the homelessness coalition. We had a meeting two weeks ago and we had fifteen agencies from throughout the valley come to Willacy County that they know the need exists. And when it comes to help, we know the need exists. Just look at San Francisco and their schools are closed because of COVID. And these ladies here have have come to the Willacy County area, not just in Raymondville, but every city in the community they've touched in one way or another, and they keep coming back. They come from Laredo. They don't, they're not across the street. But the last meeting that we had, we had forty agencies from San Antonio to Laredo and throughout the valley meet at the American Legion because the need is that great. And all those agencies work for Willacy County in one way or another, whether it's the Red Cross or the Salvation Army or so many local issues. And on and on and on, we continue to name them. But there's, our meeting is consistent with about forty agencies. But there's almost ninety agencies, and maybe more, and Dr. Badam can fill you in on that. But there's ninety agencies plus that make up the coalition of health educators. And we're the benefactors of all of that. The citizens of Willacy County are the ones that are benefiting. And we can't let the guard down. You know, health is so important. Thank you, Judge. Great.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you so much. Thank you so much again for allowing us the time to be here today. If you recall, I want to take you back two plus years ago, March of two thousand and twenty two, when we came before you, introduced ourselves. And when I say ourselves, our organization, the Mid Rio Grande Border Area Health Education Center, our mission, and what our goals and our objectives were for Willacy County. And that was to come to your community, enhance what was already happening or occurring, whether it's health education, healthcare services, information networking, and enhance that and embrace it. But in addition to that, collaborate with your residents and your agencies and your leadership to improve and create new opportunities that the residents wanted, not what we felt that they wanted. And so today, Judge, commissioners, we are here to present to you some of the deliverables that have occurred since that March two thousand and twenty two. Number one, we've been coming every month for events, meetings, or organizing events. We have conducted over thirty seven events in the different areas, different cities. Like Judge said, not just Raymondville, different cities under the Willacy County. And during those networking, we were able to meet a lot of people, engage with them about what we have to offer, but also ask them several questions. We were able to meet the school districts, the parents that attend the PTA meetings, the health providers, the main groups that our coalition, as Judge was saying, our health coalition for Willacy County, that was the first thing that we do, and we continue to do on a monthly basis, is composed of one hundred and twenty one agencies that are part of this coalition. And the mission of that coalition is to empower, fund, and share, to expand in the knowledge that we already have and create new opportunities. So one of the deliverables that I'm very, very happy to present to you today is Willacy County Healthcare and Social Services Directory. And this is something we were working on the last time that I came to present before you. Each one of you will get a copy of this. Can you go ahead and give them one? And this directory is in English and Spanish, and it includes most of the agencies that serve Willacy County. When I say most, because this is a living document, which means there's probably an agency that we didn't include, we need to include, or there's probably a new project that's going to be created that we need to include. So this will continue to grow and be revised as needed. It is available electronically. It will be available on our website, the area health education center website. But we welcome any agency that provides services to Willacy to direct themselves to the directory. This is one of the things that some of the agencies and individuals we engaged with felt that there was no one location to find out where can I go for food stamps, or where do I get advice stations, or who can help me with somebody with Alzheimer's. This directory will give you some guidance for that. And so we're very proud to present this to you, and we will continue to enhance it and revise it. Why are we doing this when the grant ended in May of two thousand and twenty four? When we came to you in two thousand and twenty two, we told you that we were going to come. And as long as we welcome that into your community, we were going to continue to serve. Today is August the twenty second, and we are before you. We haven't left. We're not going to be because we're here committed to your community, Judge. And so I want to say thank you for embracing us and welcoming us for that. And so this is for you to use, and of course, we welcome your feedback as well. Now, the other thing that I want to share with you, that during those thirty seven events that we had, both in partnership with other agencies, and then we ourselves organizing, presenting different events, we were able to interact with residents in the community. One of the things that the Department of State Health Services wanted us to find out was how can we better help Willacy County? And I think that's one of the things we talked about the last time I was here before you. So what we did was we conducted a very brief survey with no identification on them, no identifiers, just three basic questions. And I want to tell you the questions that we asked the people that we engaged with. And these were professionals, parents, people that maybe didn't, that were single, didn't have a family, were just here to work, and even some college and university age students. The one question that we asked them was, what can we do so that future pandemics or any health issues do not impact this area so much? So stop and think about that. We have the answers for that. The other one we asked, in your opinion, how can we get more people to get the vaccinations, like the flu that's available, or the COVID nineteen vaccine, or any vaccine that could protect us? We have the answers for that. The final is, what can we do to help you as a Willacy County resident to use the data that's available so that you can make informed decisions? Because think about it. During the pandemic, we would say, well, go to the CDC website so you can get information. Or go to the Texas Department of Health Services website. Our report was discovered in these three surveys. And the staff can go ahead and pass out one of these handouts to each of you. We were able to put together in one paper the most important, important topics of events that we received. And this is the Willacy County residents recommendations for medical emergency preparedness. As you can see, your population is over twenty thousand, and you know your statistics better than we do. But we wanted to put a map and put the statistics. To the right are the answers to the questions. How to prepare for medical emergencies? Twenty five percent of your residents said practice better hygiene in general. In other words, they said, we have to take responsibility for our own hygiene practices, which I found very, very interesting. The other was twenty percent said through educational campaigns like what you are doing, you meaning health fairs that we were having. If there's a new way to get information out to to people about a medical emergency, we need to have those educational campaigns. Sixty percent said individual self-care and health responsibility. In other words, why do we have to wait until the pandemic? Why can't we start taking care of ourselves individually today? So that if we are faced with these kind of things, we are not on the verge of really getting that particular virus because we're already weak or immune system. If you add these numbers, you will notice that it does not add to a hundred percent. The question, why? Because the other areas were not, like for example, five point zero percent prefer not to answer the question. And that's okay. We didn't force anybody to give us the information. Other was one point four percent community health services. They wanted more community health services. So I will give you a handout of the contained information. The next question was, how do we increase vaccination rates? Thirty three percent need educational campaigns. Educate me about the vaccine and how it's been helping so that I can decide to do what? Don't just say, here, take the COVID nineteen vaccine or the flu vaccine. Twenty five percent go communication strategies. In other words, get a flyer out, post it at the clinic, post it at the school, where people go and drop off their children, where they go to work in the coffee area at the case of employment. The other twenty percent provide the community health services. In other words, have vaccine clinics at the health fairs, at the schools, wherever you can have them. How to access credible data for informed decisions? Again, forty one percent said through an educational campaign. Show me, tell me, and I will do it. So don't just say, go to the CDC. Fifty percent said through social media. Again, give them steps. Here's a website, and click on this, and you will learn this. Eleven percent use flyers and signs, billboards they thought were very, very important. So those were the answers to the questions that we asked. And we hope that this information that we gather will help you as leaders plan for the future of your county. I know that you are doing fantastic job at bringing resources and services, but there's always more to be done. On the same page, we included that you are told by the services directory that you just received so that you can scan it and then have access to it if you need. Those are our deliverables today, and I just want to see if you have any questions.
This is very interesting. This is US public for their feedback and input. The right approach is very, very popular. We, as you know, or you might not, we are in a process of building and innovating. And we have had conversations, sidebar conversations about U F S A digital program, where we could possibly house you out of, or not really consistently, but maybe occasionally, because that particular grant is for health, right? And so I'll have that conversation with you later as we move forward. But I think this is great. I think the judge keeps me updated here and there with texts that, yes, you are here and he is involved. So thank you for giving us that. But we are thrilled, acting twenty two, that you came. We're thrilled that you're still here, and we're thrilled for what you're doing. Thank you for helping our community.
Thank you so much.
And I do want to thank you for the effort that you've done. And Judge, on the other hand, she helped us out with the application on that grant you called for the health section of the building. So very, I thank you very much for that. We did get up there.
I'm so happy to be here.
Yes, so we're moving forward. So thank you very much. You won the DNA, Judge.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and I'm glad you're doing well.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I do want to add that in the near future, I would like to bring Dr. Shameen, who's the president of the Coalition for Homelessness, and to bring her, introduce you and to her and to the commission at a later date so that y'all can be aware of what they're doing in the community and why they're here.
Sure.
And so let's continue the conversation.
Thank you. Any other questions for the other commissioners or commissioners?
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you're doing. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. And did you say this is available online also?
Thank you so much for your time. Again, we look forward to continuing our work here in Willacy County, Judge.
Absolutely.
So with that, commissioners, what we have before us is we're going to discuss the rate that we're proposing to adopt. And so for the record, it's okay, Commissioner. So basically, commissioners, what we're discussing to approve is a point seven eight three three rate, right? And so we can break it down and so forth. So what it is, just to refresh your memories and minds, is that we have no new revenue. We have public approval rate. And then we have what we're proposing to approve. So by approving the point seven eight three three, we're approving a lesser rate than the previous year. We dropped it. We're approving a greater tax rate than the non-revenue, but less than the the public approval rate. I think with this rate, we have been gauging the budget. It will enable us to do several things that we are, that we needing to do. And I think that this is the best rate to approve. And as we move forward, as we have discussing budget workshops, it will also enable us to appoint, to be proactive on looking at the future for next year and so forth, specifically the courthouse project, which is a big step for us. I think this will enable us to be able to acquire a lot of the needs, including the renovation of the courthouse, or at least to to be somewhat baked into the preparedness of renovating the courthouse. So I don't know if we need to, and I know this this particular hearing is, we don't approve the tax rate,
No.
but we do vote on discussing
Yes.
what we're intending to approve.
Correct.
Correct? So I'm not sure, Commissioner, do you have any questions as far as what we're approving?
Those supporting documents are, they're not on the notebook, correct? Thanks, Sue.
No, I don't, I don't think so. But here it is.
The judge should discuss it. If I can bring it up.
Right. The the other thing, just so, these are the same rates that we have been discussing in the budget workshops, right? It 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 basically hasn't changed. But yes, by all means, Mr. Judge, thank you.
Okay, the non-revenue rate for this year is point sixty one ninety five for your M and O, point zero one two seven for your INS, your debt service, and road and bridge is point twelve ninety six. For a total of point seventy six eighteen. Your voter approval rate is point seventy one twenty for the M and O, point zero one two seven for your INS, and point thirteen seventy four for your road and bridge. A total of point eighty six point one. That's up to how much it can go up without voter approval. Okay? Your twenty four twenty five proposed tax rate is point sixty four ten for the M and O, the county, point zero one two seven for the debt rate, and point twelve ninety six for the road and bridge. A total of point seventy eight thirty three, which is slightly lower than twenty twenty four tax rate. I'm sorry, twenty twenty three tax rate, point seventy eight fifty. At this point, the only thing you have to do is if you want to go with a proposed rate, every commissioner has to record a vote and schedule the two public hearings. Those are the numbers. Point seventy eight thirty three will be your total proposed rate if you want to go that route. If you want to go up to the voter approval rate, it's point eighty six point one.
And you see, this way, where I need a clear understanding as to what we need to do here. So we're going to vote as we normally do for the
Yes, on the, on the proposal.
Proposal, which is just
When you're going to vote into the paper, let's take them for the required to each individual commissioner reports a vote. But how they're going to vote?
Oh, I see.
The publication requires
Different, okay.
Yes, the publication requires for each of you to just, you know, vote for the
And this rate that you're coming up with?
Proposal.
We don't come up with them. That's a state control and working. It only allows you to do so much. It's whatever value we came up with at the appraisal district, what we certified to you. It'll only actually generate the amount that you generated last year. So it's a, it's a stick them for a vote.
So, so
Unless you want to vote to, you know, pull it up to the voter approval, then it's a public.
We're, so we're basically decreasing the the tax rate slightly.
Slightly.
But
From last year.
From last year. But but it's going to, but that slight change is still generating the same number of revenue. But, but it's gonna, but that slight change is still generating the same amount revenue.
It'll generate a little more revenue than what you generated last year. The works need to set up to generate the same amount at, at, as last year, the non-revenue rate. That'll give you, uh, a sense of, that's. Like it does said, it's, uh, you have so many expenses coming up. So it's recommended to go to the, to the, uh, the rate you are proposing to make the budget. To make the budget.
Just asking a question on how we do the record vote. In what's his motion in the second, when you vote, it's gonna have to come out individually, uh, each commissioner and voting process, uh, to report the vote either, uh, the way or way.
Yeah, it's coming back. It's already.
Three years.
All right, okay. So if there's no questions, ready to take a vote?
Ready.
Okay, so we need the, uh, a motion. For the.
I make a motion to approve the proposed tax rate of point seven eight three three for this, uh, twenty, twenty four twenty five.
Second. I'm gonna see, I'm looking through here because I know in the line item, it also says for us to approve the dates of the public hearings. I know I had it here somewhere.
September third.
September third.
There you go.
September ten, nine, three.
September third, right?
September third and nine thirty. Thank you. And we discussed this yesterday.
September, the Saturday is gonna be the, the public hearing and then the twelfth is gonna be the adoption.
We understood there was two public hearings. The other one was, uh, September.
Twelve.
Now we can go to seventy two hours after the first hearing.
Yeah, that's plenty of time.
Okay, I'll leave a minute second. Will you amend your motion?
When I amend my motion, uh, to add, uh, to, to hold a public, uh, hearing for September, uh, third and September twelfth.
At what time?
At nine thirty. Twenty twenty five.
I'm in my second.
Tw- tw- I'm sorry, twenty twenty four.
I'm in my second.
All right. Now we go into, uh, okay. On in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And out of both same side. I know, I know, we said it was all right. Hold on, hold on. Then, uh, we'll, we'll go by, by precincts. Precinct one commissioner, uh, what's your vote?
Aye.
Okay, in favor, you got that, Missy? Precinct.
Precinct number eight in favor.
Eight in favor. Precinct three.
In favor, yay.
In favor, yay. Precinct four commissioner.
In favor.
And I'll include myself as well. I'm only judging favor. All right. We are biding, Missy Alloza?
Yes.
Can you?
That's great.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you. Now we go back. Line item number five. We go line item number five, yes, the total remains.
Judge, what do you use?
Mr. Court.
I want to make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Do you have a comment?
Okay, go ahead, we'll, we'll discuss it.
Yes.
Miss Love, am I?
Yes, sir.
You're on the claim section?
Yes.
Um, thank you. Oh, we're reviewing our, our claims, I think there may have been an error, did you bring it to your kitchen?
Yes, I did. And so we will correct it.
Minor.
Yes, it's a minor key puncher, so.
Okay.
Well, we'll go ahead and fix it and the defendant will get paid and, and general will just request, uh, the expense.
Precinct one?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any more discussion? We have a motion in a second. On your favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
And out of both same side, in motion hearings. Now we go to line item number seven, discussion action for a limited program between Tropical, Texas, Behavioral Health and what is currently required.
Good morning, everybody.
Cortez, how are you?
Tired. Yesterday, if you got tired, put on that.
Oh, yeah.
I spoke with Texas Tropical and they were gonna come here today, but they couldn't make it. Uh, they're short on staff, but they already rehired these staff, so they're out there helping them out. But it's just going on with, you know, we'll count them. But, um, I know they have some there, the MOU agreement for, um, mental health services for inmates in the jail. Right now, we, we have an agreement, just a agreement with us. What, what we're doing, just, just to kind of let y'all know, is under the Sandro Bland Act, um, a lot of things changed with mental health for inmates. Now the requirements with Texas Commission on Jail Standards, um, it says that we need to provide medical, mental and dental health services to inmates. We do take inmates to the dentist when, when it's required. They first see a nurse practitioner. The nurse practitioner prepares them on drugs or, um, antibiotics and then we take them, we'll make them a dentist on the rotation. With the health services, we have a nurse practitioner that comes in and every Wednesday, but he's only allowed to see five inmates at a time. Yes, we have inmates with mental health issues and we have inmates with, uh, medical issues, um, quite a bit of them. What's, with the MOU and Texas Tropical, uh, one of the things they do is every day we send them up, the PIJ, and this is our inmates population, including the new inmates. And every Wednesday also in the afternoon, they come in and they do a triage on every inmate that comes in our facility, which helps us with the Sandro Bland Act. Because every inmate has to be evaluated and we need some of the paperwork from magistrate within twelve hours, which again cuts our times because it used to be seventy two hours. So, right now, uh, we've been receiving the high draft because inmates with serious mental health illnesses. And our nurse practitioner cannot, he's not trained as a mental health op, or nurse doctor, he's only a medical doctor. So we, we really need, um, a psychiatrist or someone more qualified so they can provide the proper medication to the inmates. Currently, um, I could roughly tell you we have maybe ten to fifteen mental health inmates. Out of the, out of that, maybe about five of them are serious mental health inmates. Um, we have two of them, for example, right now, um, that are pretty severe. We, one of them yesterday just made a, a threat to staff, they said, you come in here, we're not gonna hurt you. So we need to provide him with proper medication, of course, a medical doctor can't do that. We do need a psychiatrist. Another issue that we're looking at also that we really desperately need is we do have veterans that are suffering from full traumatic stress disorder. We have one, uh, one offender actually in our custody right now that had an unsuccessful suicide attempt. We caught him hanging himself. And the officers were quickly able to respond, provide treatment, we had to send him off to the state hospital. He came back and we have him, uh, closed observation and we're working with it. And he is doing a little bit, a much better, but again, he needs a psychiatrist to provide him the proper therapy and medication that is required to get his services. Because a lot of times when they're veterans, they come in our facility, the VA doesn't wanna see them because they're inmates. So that becomes a major problem for us. We, we do provide everything that we can and under the Sandro Bland Act, it, it's changed for everybody. And I just recently received, um, we received in June twenty, uh, June fifth of twenty twenty four, a technical memorandum by Texas Commission on Jail Standards where it says, Texas are responsible for providing medical, mental and dental services to all people under care. And I'll, I'll provide probably what I have here so y'all can read it, and I highlighted it especially where it indicates that. Because we do need to provide that, uh, mental health to the staff. Now, I understand, I, I don't have the original MOU with me, uh, I know it was given to the sheriff and sheriff gave me a copy of it and I don't know where I left it, it, we've been so busy with maintenance stuff. But I do, I believe it was like a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for the psychiatrist, but the fact is, is that the psychiatrist is not gonna be seen every inmate on our facility. With the systems of Texas Tropical, we're going to designate, which is actually a high-risk inmate that we need to have services for. So that's not, and, and I don't know that the first thing people were asking is, are they, the psychiatrist is gonna see all the inmates? No, it's not gonna see all the inmates, only the ones that are on high risk, like the veteran, like, um, uh, the two inmates that are in high risk right now that we have. We have the two sisters and I know y'all know what I'm talking about, one of them we still have in our facility, but she has her moments, she throws water at us sometimes and whatever she can throw. We have another inmate, um, he, he's bipolar schizophrenic and believe it or not, he only listens to me or Sergeant Nieto. Because he's actually gone to a point where he destroyed his whole cell, water pool and everything, and our staff has to go in and deal with it. But again, he is competent to stand trial, but then again, he needs, he needs the services of a sort of mental health issues. And of course, we do have other ones, um, that are, are still pending to go to the state hospital for competence. So we need, you know, to provide medication, so at least help us and coordinate some things so the state hospital can work faster for us to get these inmates in and out of our facility. So, personal, I mean, I hope I can ask you any questions that I can have, but we do need the services and this agreement signed, um, to get the assistance from these, these offenders in our jails.
Judge, have you had a chance to review the MOU?
Yes, and, and I believe, because, uh, Mr. Cortez had come by before with this. And, uh, I, I think I forward it to Missy Alloza, I'm not sure, Missy Alloza, whether you have it or not, but I'm, I'm, I'm reading it. And basically what it, what it amounts to, commissioners, is as you know, the need, um, is, is, is always greater than the availability of funding, right? This is no doubt something that is needed.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and we just finished approving considering the tax rate, right? And what that does, it triggers certain amount of revenues. And what I'm seeing here, what you have before, is that they're charging a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, right? And, and but, there is a clause, this, which we can, and it's blank, where we can, uh, put a maximum amount of hours per week. And that, that holds, uh, accountable both sides, meaning they'll be accountable to provide those services up to so many hours a week. By the same token, we'll be able to also, um, limit, if not much we can afford.
It's good. Now, one of the questions I, I'll have is that, when you say a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, is that broken down? I mean, if he was seen fifteen minutes, are we gonna be charged a hundred and fifty dollars? Or are we gonna be prorated to, to what the fifteen minutes would be?
I don't know, um, but I, I'll respond with that, uh, but I can ask, um. Is that even going to give a chance?
Let me just take a shot at this. Uh, it, it does say that, uh, under this agreement, uh, they'll be charging in one hour increments, or if that's what you're asking.
Well, yes, because I mean, it, sometimes, you know, uh, if a, if a patient, you know, is recommended, even though you recommended that patient to be seen, he could refuse service.
Right.
You know, if he goes into the, to there and then, then all of a sudden he wants to get up and leave, are we gonna be billed for the hundred and fifty dollars an hour? That's, you know.
Right.
So, um, you know, that, I think I would wanna find out.
That's, that's a good question, and again, I can, I can ask them, um, and see what, what their response is gonna be. And it does happen.
Yes.
We have it happen with Texas Tropical. But many times what I do is, if they don't wanna come out of their single cells, sometimes most of these inmates aren't single cells. And I like doing this so they can actually see where the inmate's living. I like taking, like, Texas Tropical, I'll take them to the single cell and we watch them. And I'll open up their face lock and they can see them, they can smell them, because some of them don't take showers, uh, see the condition of the cells. And they can actually observe not only the person, but also their living conditions, which is a big plus for us, and then the doctor can start asking us to order medication for the syndrome.
Has, has the sheriff's office, uh, ever considered, I don't know if this is in the realm of hiring a mental health person for the facility?
The sheriff's office has, uh, I think it would be a good idea, uh, we do need one. Because right now, um, we, our count is eighty two inmates. Uh, we have anyone in the booking in the back and then one in booking pending to be placed in there. Out of all those inmates, twenty five inmates are taking some sort of psychotropic medication for them. That's pretty high now. But yesterday we released one, a COVID twenty six. Charles Button just left, a COVID twenty seven, he just had a couple days ago, so. Sometimes we'll have high numbers, sometimes we'll have low ones, which for sole medical, uh, mental health professional to come in and be hired, I think it would be a good idea because we can provide the services to these inmates. But they do need them. They do need them because we have inmates that come in with not only, um, we have one, for example, in a single cell that, um, has attempted suicide in the streets. He's, he doesn't take psychotropic medication, but he substitutes it with methamphetamine or cocaine. Uh, so now he's going, he, right now he's going through his laws, plus we gotta do it with his mental health state. So all these pluses are major problems for us because we're the ones that gotta do it. And again, he's not a pain, a pain in the butt for us, but we're not, we, we, we're not, under the Sandro Bland Act, we even have to get trained for suicide mental health prevention two hours a year, which is difficult, but we're doing. And actually right now preparing a presentation to do with staff on mental health. But all this kind of things changes and it changes almost every month. We have to watch the technical systems on Tico and, and judge, you know this. We have a presume, you know this, um, that everything changes with, with Texas Commission on Jail Standards. And this is one of the main issues that, that are on us, um, is mental health for the inmates because of what's going on. It, it's, it's in our eyes.
Judge, I think, uh, you know, I think, uh, Cortez is on, on the, on the right path. You know, we definitely need the mental health aspect of, for, for the jail. I think though, I'd have to find out what the billing, how the billing actually works. If it's for the full one fifth, the full hour, whether it's five minutes or thirty minutes. I'd like to know if it's, if it's that full amount, because then that'll kind of gauge us, okay, you know what? We could approve this amount, you know, and sometimes it's, we know it, they're not gonna be seen for the full amount, it might be less and wouldn't be able to create, uh, a pay history on, on what, what we're being charged.
The other big one is, uh, I mean, we're getting, uh, into what they're targeting is because of where we're at geographically is whether or not the car starts, they take off. Wherever they might be coming from, that's the other big part.
Right, right. Uh, and, and, uh, also, I guess, you know, to that notion, um, like, what is the schedule? Okay, are they only seen on Tuesdays or are they only seen on Wednesdays? Or, so you align, you set up appointments for every Tuesday and you know that you're gonna have five, now those five, you know that there's gonna be the, the, you're gonna hit your marker of what they set for you.
Right.
So, but if that starts when they turn on the keys and they're driving twenty five minutes, thirty minutes to get here, now we're only on thirty minutes.
Right.
Whether that just kind of.
And I think it starts, I think it starts when they arrive, when they start making first contact with inmates, because we, we're gonna keep documentation of when that person comes in, and we always do that with Texas Tropical. We also do the telemed now, uh, Texas Tropical actually gave us, uh, these really fancy, uh, you know, phones with the screen on it, it's internet, where we can actually do telemed, which is also because we can do it twenty four hours a day. So if we have an inmate, like, the one that tried to commit suicide, um, after he came back to the hospital, we already had him being seen by Texas Tropical, who has a complete violation. But again, a lot of these people are gonna be seeing Texas Tropical before they see the psychiatrist. And then we can work that out, like, what time is it coming in, what type of, you know, what is he gonna charge and so forth. But we can, I can actually start doing. But we can, I can actually start doing more research on your questions, and I can get back with you, and let you know what we can, what we can figure out.
And I'll reach out to you.
Okay.
Because I think mental health is one of the biggest, you know, very big advocates in, in, for mental health.
Yes.
And maybe we can kind of start working on this a little bit together.
Yes, I mean, we, we try a lot of different avenues, and we've, we've, we've reduced a lot of the aggression within the jails. You'd be surprised, coffee's amazing, coffee works great with a lot of these mental health inmates, because they want that life fresh coffee. And sometimes we sit with them, and we talk to them, and just to give them a minute of ten, fifteen, twenty minutes of their time, it reduces the stress. We do Siduko, the tablets that we now got. That actually has mental health presentations for the inmates, so they can reduce stress, like anger management, all that kind of stuff. So that's a big plus for us as well. The veteran that we have, he's going through those, those books, and he's also going through a lot of the activities that are on that tablet that are helping him reduce his stress. Plus, you know, we, we, we bring him little things here and there, just to keep his mind occupied and do other things. So we try different avenues to get to this mental health, because it is a very space issue. The drugs doesn't help at all, but we are trying our best, and whatever else help we can get with the psychiatrist would really reduce the chances of someone passing away at our jail.
Couple of questions, is this something, is this a new fee that we're occurring, or is it some, something that has been, we've been paying for the whole time?
It's, it's new, it, it, you're correct, you're wrong, but I think it goes above and beyond the services that, that Tropical is now providing. This is more of situations that are critical.
Yes.
And close to a higher level.
It eludes here, unless I'm reading wrong, that we are to provide that another funded mandate, but it also alludes that we can do it to, through telehealth, will, will suffice.
That's what we have.
Telemed?
Yes.
Is there a fee for that that's involved?
No, we're using it right now, and there's no fee. It was going to, we're actually going to get another one, but we're going to put that in the nurse's station. Because sometimes we've had double, you know, two different people trying to do the same thing. So we're, we're at the, the only problem, we're having issues with our internet that we're trying to get, because it's, it's slow. But once we get that taken care of, the telemed will work a lot faster and a lot better. But we do have, we've had it for several months, I think maybe close to a year.
I know there was, there was an apparatus left there several years back. Additionally, the twenty-four hour hotline, or twenty-four hours a day, seven day a week hotline, that's still available.
Yes, sir, yes, and of course, the telemed, and the good thing is that with high-risk inmates, I have direct communication with Ms. Makula. She's one of the assistant directors of Texas Tropical. I'll email her, call her, and she's very quick in responding to us, and, and actually, she's come down and seen the patients herself, if her staff are busy. So we have a very, very good positive rapport with Texas Tropical, I can tell you that right now.
This is just enhancing it, it would cost more, but it could get a further.
Right.
Additional services.
The psychiatrist is just enhancing it a lot more, which was, which what we need. Because they can't provide the medication, because they need to come from the psychiatrist.
Yes, I would like to, to have these, these questions answered as far as the rate. But I mean, you're, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to delay it any further for you, at all. But we just want to make sure that we know what we're getting to as far as billing.
Okay.
If you can get those answers, and then, if, you know, give me a call, we can discuss it.
Okay.
For the next, for the next commissioners' court, we can be fully prepared on, on, on these type of questions and answers.
Yes.
We did a wonderful job as far as presenting, provided great information. But, you know, you provide information, we're going to have answers, we're going to have questions, and leads to other questions. And I think we're definitely on the right track, we definitely want to provide the mental health aspect of it. But good job, and, and let's, let's get those questions answered.
No, yeah, I will, I will, I'll work on them today, I'll work on them today. We do have, we're scheduled, we, we do monthly meetings also with the directors of Texas Tropical. Every meet, every month, we, we meet at the sheriff's office, and we do a discussion board between Mr. Makula. There's a, there's different avenues with Texas Tropical, there's drug programs. They actually even have, if, say, an inmate gets out of our facility, he's homeless, he has nowhere to go, and he's, he's a patient of Texas Tropical, we can actually coordinate where that, that inmate can, they'll find his housing for fifteen days, and to provide him access to something, and then services or whatever, so we have that before with them as well. And every month, we discuss patients, we discuss activities going on with the inmates. You know, what's happening, what can we do, things a lot better. And like, a lot of the inmates, like Mr., we have an inmate, Mr. Whittington, Michael Whittington. He was the one that was placed in a home indefinitely in Austin, because we had nowhere to put him. And they are actually the ones that coordinated with us to provide these services for Mr. Whittington. Which, I had an actual conversation with him on the phone, and he thanked us, the jail, for providing all the mental health assistance to him. And we want to continue this, to provide services for these people that are mentally disabled.
But to be clear, we're in compliance as far as, you know, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we're, we're good, we're still waiting for inspection, we don't know why we haven't been.
We're, we're compliant with the medical.
Yes, yes. Of course, again, like with the Center for Blind Act, we have to be on top of it. We have to check it, there's always things going on, because this is always popping up. I mean, Bear County just had one inmate suicide, and one inmate was killed in, within twenty-four hours. And because there's mental issues going on, there's, there's, there's help that's not being provided, because it's such a big facility. We need to provide that here. So we're good with Charles Sanders and everything with him.
We're going to table this, this, this item for our next meeting, please put it on the next meeting.
Okay, sure.
So we can look into it, probably we can hopefully get it all approved, sort of.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to table?
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner, that's my second by Commissioner Vasquez. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
One, so next meeting?
Because we're having somebody here.
I'll reach out to you, let you know what.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
Good morning, and that would be us, right? So we gave you a break?
That's on your TV, isn't it?
Oh, no, no, not good. Don't tell anybody that. So good morning, we gave you a break June and July, right? But here we are, we'll be here August, September, a lot of the upcoming months. Because of course, part of, where the victim assistance unit has done, yes, does, is to try to raise awareness in the community, there's a lot in need for it. And so what we have in September, or the reason we're here, is to try to get the proclamation declaring September twenty twenty-four as bullying and suicide prevention month. We do have some presentations that we'll be doing at the county school districts, so that we can raise that awareness. Because of course, we know that in the school districts, well, not just in the school districts, but a lot of times bullying can lead to suicide. So it's important, right, that, that the students know there, there is help for them. So, and what they can do if they are victims of bullying, so. Letty, she's our new Letty Moniz, all right, she's our new victim advocate. So she'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and thank you for allowing us to be on the agenda.
Propclamation declaring September twenty twenty-four as bullying and suicide prevention month. Whereas in the United States, forty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-six people committed suicide in twenty twenty-two. And whereas in the United States, there was an estimated one point six million suicide attempts in twenty twenty-two. And whereas in our country, bullying is the third leading cause of death among young people, and suicide is the eleventh leading cause of death. And it's whereas in Texas, there were four thousand three hundred and sixty-eight deaths due to suicide in twenty twenty-two. And whereas in Texas, the death rate of suicide mortality was fourteen point four percent in twenty twenty-two. And whereas, community organization and resources are essential to continuing the fight against bullying and suicide and the loss of young lives. And whereas, reducing the stigma by discussing suicide and increasing the awareness of available resources for those suffering from suicidal thoughts is important to maintain the health and happiness of citizens. And whereas, many of, many of the people who died never received effective behavioral health services for many reasons, including the difficulty of accessing services by healthcare providers trained in the best practices to reduce suicide risk. The stigma of using behavioral health treatment and the stigma associated with losing a loved one to suicide. And whereas, public awareness of the warning signs and a network available for at-risk individuals are essential to continue lowering the risk of suicide in, in the country. And whereas, reducing the stigma by discussing suicide and increasing the awareness of available resources for those suffering from suicidal thoughts is important to maintain the health and happiness of citizens. Whereas Suicide Prevention Month provides an opportunity to recommit raising of suicide awareness as Willsey County District Attorney's Victim Assistance Unit will be going into the Willsey County School Districts and have presentations on how serious suicide prevention is, signs to look for, and providing them with resources to equitably support and, and services. And now, therefore, be it resolved by all members of the Willsey County Commissioners' Court, that Willsey County supports the start of the Conversation Public Awareness Campaign and does hereby proclaim September as Bullying and Suicide Prevention Month.
And just before y'all go into the decision, I did want to just point out that the reason we use the twenty twenty-two statistics is because there are twenty twenty-three statistics, but they're provisional. So that means they're not even complete yet, so we didn't want to give you inaccurate numbers, usually it's like two years prior. So just in case anybody had questions, why we didn't use the twenty twenty-three, that's why. And I guess you can tell the color, right? We hope that some of y'all will wear the orange in September as well, so that's basically our, our presentation. So thank you.
No pens, do they?
You get pencils.
Pencils.
He's been doing a lot of, I knew somebody was going to ask, I knew it.
I gave him to Letty.
I said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait till somebody asks, why are we getting pencils? Uh, we've been doing a lot of back-to-school events, which of course, that's something else that the victim assistance unit does. So we've been doing a lot of those back-to-school events, so we've been, they've been, they've had great turnout. So a lot of our promotional items have gone, but we're in the process of ordering more. Oh, we did bring new pencils. Well, you already know you don't get them unless you approve, right? That's like every time. That's every time.
So we'll approve the resolution, Judge?
Second, I'll pro commission, sir.
The pro commission.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Vasquez. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carried.
All right, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
Commissioner, De La Paz is stepping up for the record. Commissioner Lo, made a word that I inadvertently skipped a break. And I had a break, discussion act to approve traffic control sign, stop sign on the corner of Coast and Sixth Street in Sebastián. Texas making this a four-way stop action required.
Judge, this was something I placed on the, on the agenda. It's been, it's been a little, a little while here that I've been looking into it. I had numerous requests from, from the public about the hazards, I guess, in this intersection. Just to kind of set the stage, it's a, it's a county road within the, within the community of South Stan. It runs about a mile and a half, and I think there's only one set of stop signs, it stopped north, north and south contract. And everybody in the, in that intersection, corner, has asked us to, you know, to do something. So I, so I looked into it, and this was kind of one of the first steps, was to run it through Commissioners' Court and get y'all's approval. We already got, received permission for a good location for it, that's not to, you know, disrupt any water services or water lines or anything like that. As a matter of fact, the posts are in, but they're, they're covered up. And then, I think you see, I was on the line there, I, I looked at chapter two fifty-one of the Crash Protection Code under roadways, and, and we're well within our rights to do that, it goes into a long diatribe of other, other issues, but it all has to do with the population in this. We're under seventy-eight thousand in, in South Stan, next to the whole county. So we're going to, we're going to post it in a public, public place, to let them know before we, you know, institute it. But right now, what I'm asking is to, is to make a motion to approve this, this stop sign.
For the record, Commissioner De La Paz, I have a motion by Commissioner Vasquez.
I'll second. With a quick question.
Sure.
Do you have to post a stop ahead for a time to let people know that there's a stop sign?
That's a, that's a great question. From what I've read in the statute, you know, we got to run it through court and get your approval. And then, basically, post it, it says in a, in a, in an area where people gather, it says conspicuous, you know.
Okay.
We got to post it for a week, and then we go forward, but so what we did, and I, I got it from, the idea from what's in this. We put the, we put the pipe up and the sign, but it's covered, covered, so everybody's already stopped. I haven't got any calls, complaints, other than they wanted a bigger sign, and, and you know, it's in the regulation that we have. So basically, that's, and, and my understanding, I don't have any supporting document, that there was a school bus, bus accident there, a little, a little while back. So I think, I think it's married to, to stop that, it's, it's a cut through, and it, it also, there's a, there's a parallel street called Palm Head, just one block, Judge's a little bit, to the west, and, and it actually has stop signs north and south at every intersection. Starting at seven, six, and, and further. So this is going to be more consistent. But yes, I don't, Commissioner, I don't, we could always post something, I guess, but it is a part of the reading, you said.
Okay.
And I think we should, we should listen to him.
Yeah, she's on. And that's good, Commissioner, because in general, when streets are improved, that's when issues like this come. Whether it's a stop sign, or maybe a speed bump, things like that, so without even knowing whether or not you have a project going there, I want to congratulate you, because that's a good problem to have.
Yes.
So I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carried. Line item number eleven, discussion act to approve renewal and slash amended contract for PC Tech for U, Texas required. Commissioner, this is, this is, as soon as we, we did, had a conversation on this contract. Moreover, because one of the things that we had, had some discussion on is whether or not we go back to creating a position to have an employee as an IT, but what was discussed was that we continue to, to have this, this, this contract for at least, you know, another year. And so, having done that, then, so the contract that we currently have with PC Tech for U is up for renewal, and also, we tentatively agree to entertain the idea to go from the three thousand per month to thirty-five hundred. Would that make sense?
So I think there's two items, the first one was a teenager from two minutes back, before, maybe back when we're going to go over to vote on the approval of using the information that system, you know, address. I think we discussed that through, current, and we still had some questions regarding that, of that email account. I think it was pending the addendum that was added to the contract.
Because which, Mr. Namosa had a.
And then, there was no raise in rate, just a raise in hours allowed it, and to, for what that we're doing Friday today, which is, you know, the, the type card for, for the type card, he has put it on, on live stream. the type card for it, for the type party is put it on, on live stream. Now, have you got any questions regarding that?
Yes. We're getting, we got, right now, we have one camera.
We have three cameras available, uh, we're waiting on the mounts. So there'll be one facing towards y'all, one toward the, to the audience.
So you got three mounts?
Correct. Correct. And, um,
And it's a, it's a one-year contract?
It's a one-year contract on that. There's a subscription fee for that, for that services. Um, it allows you to stream to YouTube or any other platform that Chumia and mine back in, right? Uh, we did post on Facebook, on the county's Facebook, uh, the social stages, um, the links for them. Uh, people have subscribed.
Do we know how many viewers we have?
Right now, there's about fifteen viewers, I think. Uh, sixty-two people have subscribed.
That's what I was gonna say. We, we had to make fifty subscribers, right?
Correct. Yeah, you have to make fifty subscribers, uh, or you couldn't go live. You have to just record and post. But then you got the subscription, the subscriptions, and from two residents that monitor services, I guess. Uh, we got things that are good.
Now, well, they, uh, now that's gonna stay on there as archived. So later on today, we can go back and.
That's true, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Can I adjourn a second?
Second.
I get it. So there's two parts. Last one, well approved, uh, using the, uh, county website. And so I did submit to, to, uh, to Mr. De La Paz the information or modify the current contract we want, uh, to improve use of the, uh, she'll tell how I see you are old town and, and potentially, potentially in our town and power. So that would be for the current contract. These contracts are filed over the thirty. And then the contract after the next board, the future starts on from seven to the first. Uh, the only thing I asked is that, to the entity of opposite to improve that to the eighth, that I have already talked to the, to the current contract, uh, to the future contract.
Right. Yeah, and I took a, a look at it. And yes, it, it includes, uh, what, what you had, uh, suggested or proposed. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Thank you, no problem.
Thank you, sir. Line item number twelve, discussion action to request approval of the county audit to conduct point entry for asset forfeiture, modded, uh, with county district attorney account action required.
Judge, this one is my, uh, chapter fifty-nine. Uh, the asset forfeiture were required to submit any part every year, uh, any entity, including the sheriff's office, that does any asset forfeiture will go to the report to the sheriff's office. It's on actually that the, uh, ushered out the opportunity to, if we win, uh, the meeting.
So move, Judge?
And a motion by Commissioner De La Paz.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tejera. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And all opposing sign, motion carries. Line number thirteen, discussion approval of proposed change order number one for the ARCA project not included project. Number twenty-three seventy-nine, action required. We're handing that out. Let me just say that, uh, I, I think the project outside is doing very well. Yesterday, I believe, was the first time that we had district court, uh, while they were in their construction. They did take a walk out there. There was cars parked on the next block. So, uh, to me, it signifies that we do need, uh, our partners, not mine. We do have this rush for the district court or other courts. Uh, so it's not every day you're gonna see a whole bunch of cars, but we do need them. We're gonna have them, so. I, I think it's, it's going to, thus far.
What is the, uh, stipulated completion date?
Uh, I believe, he has, when the, they, and we do have it on the timetable, the completion date.
The contract ends until March third, twenty twenty-fifth, uh, but I don't foresee it going to.
Neither do I. The, the only thing, and I'll be up from this. Uh, the only thing that, uh, concern that I might have is, uh, the two weeks of early vote. Not so much election day, but early votes. But I think we'll, we'll be able to swing it. I took a look out there.
What dates are those?
That's gonna be at the end of October, I don't understand what you're doing.
Yes.
The end of October?
Twenty-second, I think.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. That way you can go ahead and alert the contractor, make sure that, you know, they, uh, all the barricades or whatever safety precautions are made.
Right.
As much out of the way as possible.
Yes. We'll, we'll have a conversation on that. I, I think we, we can, we can, we're able to, uh, improvise to be able to have a smooth, uh, early voting action.
I think we have opportunity.
Yes, we do. But other than that, my concern was that when we had court and we went through it yesterday, you know, we made it. So, good deal.
Good morning. Judge Commissioners, Valina Vega, from some professional services for the record. Um, what we have in front of you for your consideration is change order number one for, uh, the parking lot project. When we were designing the, the improvements, uh, one of the things that we were concerned about, uh, was budget. So, uh, the stairs, uh, we, we looked at them, you know, they seem to be in okay state, you know. Uh, however, once the contractors started, uh, demolishing and taking a closer look, um, they, you know, they uncovered cracks, uh, on those stairs. And, uh, we are recommending, uh, if, if possible, for those stairs to be replaced as well as part of the project. So, uh, the cost that's in this change order is the replacement of those stairs and, uh, part of this additional sidewalk up to the next joint. Um, and the second part of that is along, uh, the road, we had, um, also recommended a two-foot, uh, pavement repair against, uh, that curb. Um, the contractor's recommending five feet instead of the two, uh, due to the disrepair of the road. Uh, he, he believes the, the asphalt will hold better and it'll be an easier installation with a five feet. So, uh, the total increase of, of the change order would be two thousand seven hundred, um, and with no additional fees.
Um, on the, on the stairs, uh, we're talking about stairs, but is it, are they gonna be handicap accessible also?
Yes, uh, well, the stairs are, you know, are not handicap accessible, but all the routes, uh, leading to it on the other sidewalk spot.
Does this keep us moving?
Yes.
We are within budget, most definitely.
So would you, would you recommend a ramp instead of, uh, steps?
Uh, no, uh, we have ramps everywhere, uh, from both sides. And they're able to use that second sidewalk that's closest to the building, uh, which leads up to it. So there's, uh, there's that. We, and, um, in order to get a ramp that's ADA accessible, we would need to design something that's kinda like zigzagging. It would take more room.
So our handicap accessibles are gonna be at the ends?
Uh, that's, uh,
Yes, they're there already.
They're there, they're there already. We're gonna have, uh, we're gonna keep those. And that's where the handicap parking is at.
So no handicap in the front?
Yes, there, there is gonna be handicap, but it's all gonna be ramped. And then it's gonna be leading up to the sidewalk that goes along the building.
Valina, uh, I need to get with you so you can, so you can make me feel better as to how the sidewalk's gonna be at the higher level, right?
Yes.
Obviously, the parking lot will be at the lower level. Both of them will have curves, one curb facing the sidewalk and another curb facing the, is there gonna be two curbs, uh, face back to back?
No, there's just gonna be the one curb, uh, against the parking area and then the sidewalk flat next to it.
Okay, so maybe we'll, we'll go with this. I, I'd like to
Sure, thanks.
To know exactly how, to visualize.
How that slope is gonna, okay, yes, uh-huh.
Yeah, and, and I know they still have a lot more fail to, to come up.
Yes, right, right. Right now, it looks a little daunting, cause it's a big cut down. But, you know, we still have, uh, all the the layers of the parking lot coming in, so.
Right. But, but even if it's, you know, ten inches or even a foot, I still would like to know how it's gonna turn out.
I think what the, the concern you're talking about, I can see it now, Judge, is that as a, as a, as a resident hearts in front, or, or somebody's visiting here, uh, if there's gonna be a big drop off from, and most, most people, I, I'm included, yeah, I'm included myself, you know, I'm not gonna go all the way around. I'm gonna wanna climb. Right? Uh, so that, that's gonna kinda be level, right?
Uh, it's gonna be gradually, uh, slowed down. And we did provide several connections to the other side.
Change the way we had it before. They're gonna be visiting, I'm just saying.
And, and this, but you're exactly right. The, the problem though, is that we had issues with the rain. So I'd like to tackle that.
Okay.
Now that we're there, right?
That was considered.
And see what, what it, and you probably already have it in your, in your engineering plan, but I would like to, to know exactly how.
How it looks.
Second.
Okay, we read, uh, this, uh, uh, to approve a change order to pay a total amount of two thousand seven hundred dollars for the ARCA parking lot improvements project. Two three seven nine, to be funded by the American Rescue Plan Act Fund One One Four.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejera.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And all opposing sign, motion carries. Line item number fourteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm committed.
Guys consider select CDW SG as a vendor to complete project implementation for the American Rescue Plan Act Fund Offer and or local assistance and travel consistency fund, LAT CF, depending on funding available for the ARCA project number two four eight eight.
Yes, sir. We only have, um, one application, so it will be a sole vendor. And we did have the committee, the ARCA committee's fore. Regardless, you also filed a pursuit. And that is the, the leader that we, that is being recommended.
It's just one vendor. And we are consistent with, uh, the requirements.
Yes.
And guidelines. Can I adjourn a motion to?
Motion to approve CDWG as selected vendor to complete project implementation for the American Rescue Plan Act Fund One One Four and/or local assistance and travel consistency fund, LAT CF, depending on fund available for ARCA project number two four eight eight.
And a motion by Commissioner De La Paz. Second. Second by Commissioner Tejera. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And all opposing sign, motion carries. Line number fifteen, action approved to purchase computers, uh, slash technology for elections department for the American Rescue Plan Act Fund One Fourteen and/or local assistance and travel consistency fund, LAT CF, depending on available for ARCA project number two four eight eight.
Please, so, um, the committee, um, is aware that this project is on the budget. This, uh, the court had obligated, approved to obligate three thousand dollars. And then there was a negotiation from the vendor in our office. And this is, uh, the final, the final price that was given to us. Um, so we do still have funding. We did, um, meet with, um, our auditorium, it's not the number. And, uh, we do still have funding with the LAT CF. And then, of course, I met with Judge. And, um, it, if the decision was made to present to the court, if you could approve the over, the, what's over the budget, so it's, this is what you have to fund, the one hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-four cents. Um, we do also have our project manager here today with us, Mr. D V I, Pradas Minis. And I wanted to make sure, because, you know, we follow the guidelines and we've been doing this for a while now. But I also wanted to make sure that we could come back in the, in the next issues court and we will, we can obligate the four hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-four cents. And we'll be in compliance, as we are here today for this request.
Basically, Commissioner, is, uh, we budget versus what was turned in, uh, for the project or the computers. And it's, uh, four hundred and twelve and eighty-four cents over. So this is just, it's just tapping to
The LAT CF.
Pay the LAT CF, to pay the.
Yes.
Judge, make a motion to approve the purchase of computer slash technology for election department for the total amount of three thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-four cents for the, from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, locals for and, uh, and or local assistance and travel consistency fund, LAT CF, depending on fund available for ARCA project number eight.
I have a motion by Commissioner.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And all opposing sign, motion carries. Yes, I feel it. Line item number sixteen, request community to stop eight installations of the C S and Belita lot, one to five. Of La Peva stage will be line size, slats six through seven will be dual line extensions. Lot eight will be a line extension, uh, line size, individual. Then it says C maps attached, please be two, and extra required.
So tell them what, what's going on, uh, that was offered, and everything's in order?
Can I adjourn a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve. Second.
Second, second by Commissioner Tejera. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And all opposing sign, motion carries. Line item number seventeen, request permission to replace three of these poles located in South Texas. Locations are at southeast corner of Eighth Street and Machiko Avenue Street, southwest corner of Eighth Street and West Street, northeast corner of Eighth Street and West Street, please be four extra required.
Judge, this was, uh, go, go ahead, Mr. Salinas.
Yeah, this was demanded by Frontier, I think, Frontier Communications. They were replacing three poles. They're just approximately located, cause they're not, you know, they're few feet from the intersection. The one on the north, uh, on the northeast corner, it's not really on the northeast corner. It's like behind that building that we're running. We would have a Christmas party. They're kinda back there in the back. But they're replacing those poles. They've admitted that. I, which I gotta review. I got your approval back from and she.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejera.
Second.
Let me just interject. These, uh, this has been about four months coming to get these done. We had, and I've got some pictures, uh, there was one pole that was being held up by old tree tree. It cut it into a fork and it was over the hill, uh, which came to light because of the destruction that's going on. In South Stan, with the street improvements, drainage, road improvements. And, uh, some of the lines were down. It took me a while to figure out what company owned it. And it was Frontier. And it, it, it took several months, but they, they've already got one replaced, actually. And I think there's two left to do, but I appreciate them doing it. Again, it all falls in line with the street repair.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And all opposing sign, motion carries. Uh, item number eighteen, upward drug request.
Travel request for investigator David Tandana from the Willsey County Sheriff's Department to attend the new detective school and eyewitness evidence and identification training in Florida Texas on October the seventh through eleventh, twenty twenty-four, um, overnight, no overnight stay. Action required. Travel request for investigator Samlet Amayo and David Tandana to attend the crimes against women conference in South Padre Island, Texas on September twenty-ninth through October the first, twenty twenty-four. Action required. Travel request for Annette C. Inahosa to attend the C C A W summit beyond the bounds conference to be held in South Padre Island, Texas on September thirtieth through October the first, twenty twenty-four, to be paid from Fund Fifty-Six. Action required. Travel request for Juan Arni Hades to, to attend the T A G B P U smuggling inter, introduction team to be held in San Antonio, Texas on September
to be held in San Antonio, Texas on September fourth, twenty-twenty-four, to be paid from Fund fifty-six. Action required. Travel request for victim assistance coordinator and victim advocate Maria Gloria C. Cortez and Letizia Muniz to attend the Light the Way and Human Trafficking twenty-twenty-four Summit in Corpus Christi, Texas on August the twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four, to be paid from the VAU grant number two-one-zero-six-four-one-four. Action required. Travel request for district clerk Isabel Dami and deputy clerk Amaris Olvena to attend the Region Eight Fall Conference in Kingsville, Texas on October the third through the fourth, twenty-twenty-four. Action required.
Commissioners, last time I checked, the line item, obviously, this is a win expenditure. We still had handful in that line item.
For travel? That was the question that we were paying with.
Yeah. I will deliver right after the meeting, and we'll see how it's...
Afterwards?
After that.
It looks like all the proper support documents are in, and it looks like number three, four, and five were covered by...
Correct.
Other grants, which I'm guessing wasn't.
Correct.
And then the rest were from our fund.
Correct.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner S. C. F. And by Commissioner T. Gerina. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature by the same eye?
Aye.
And all opposed in sign, motion carries. Okay. So we go to line item number nineteen. Executive session, heard with bill counsel regarding pending contemplation, negotiation of the county's employees and interest pursuant to VTCA government code section five-five-one-four-zero-seven-one, A and two, and deliberations regarding pending contemplation, negotiation of the county's employees and interest pursuant to VTCA government code section five-five-one-four-zero-seven-one, A and two, and the samples. I think that we have updates on. I mean, we don't have anything that's pending on that.
No, we aren't. I'd like to vet this impact to the next, the next meeting, and if any, we're...
Right. Can I entertain a motion to best line item for nineteen twenty?
So moving. Second.
Second by Commissioner T. Gerina. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature by the same eye?
Aye.
And all opposed in sign, can I entertain a motion to appear?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner T. Gerina. Second. Second. Judge, I see a... All in favor, signature by the same eye?
Aye.
And all opposed in sign, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner.